All right, the clock on the wall says seven. Call this meeting to order. So we need certain things to be able to have a town meeting. We need quorum, which in this town is 15. We need a clerk, which today is Lisa Postma. And we need a moderator, which is myself, Keith Minard. We also have people seated over here who are non-resident members of town meeting. They may work for the town or be able to provide certain expertise that may help guide us in our decision-making. Is there any dissent to allowing them to speak at this meeting? Okay, seeing none, they will be allowed to speak. We have seated over here our finance committee, who worked tirelessly with the town in order to prepare the bulletin that went out to all of you, made recommendations as per our bylaws. The people who make our town meeting possible, we have our counters, I'm sorry, our checkers today, which is Pam Carter and Lois Carden. Our counters, Don Postma and Jen Larson. Our constables, Carol Field and Ben Tassino. And our mic runner, Isabella and Minard. So a little bit about how a town meeting will be run. There'll be a motion. After that, there'll hopefully be a second. At that point, we'll entertain questions or debate. If anyone would like to speak, please raise up your voter card and you will be called on. Depending on how the meeting goes, there may be proponent speech, question and answer, and debate. Please wait for the mic to arrive to you before speaking. Once the mic arrives, state your name and street address. Direct all questions to the moderator. After you are done asking your question, please pass the mic back to the mic runner. I will ask if there is a follow-up, and if there is, then they will hand the mic back to you and you may ask a follow-up. So debate, again, direct all questions and debate through the moderator. We start with a question and answer time. Debate will follow that. After debate is exhausted or the question is called, you do need to be recognized in order to call the question. Call the question means you're asking to end discussion and move on to a vote. In order to end discussion, you need a two-thirds vote, and as I said, you must be recognized. Votes will be taken in different manners, such as unanimous consent. This is one that we've been using very successfully for a few years now, which is I will ask if there's any dissent to passing the motion. If there is none, then the motion will be considered passed unanimously. If there isn't unanimous consent, or there's something where I feel we need a hard number vote on the article, I'll ask for a voice vote, which is your typical, all those in favor, all those opposed, or a counted vote, which will just require you to hold up your voter card and be counted. So this is another thing that we've been doing recently, which I think has helped move the process along, and that's taking motions from the floor. So if the motion is the same as what's printed in the warrant, it appears to be self-explanatory and warrant of discussion, I'll say I'll accept the motion as printed in the warrant. Again, there'll be a second, and then see if there's any dissent to passing the article unanimously. Also, in the interesting time, if a motion needs to be read, more than likely I will be the one to read it. Any amendments must be submitted in writing. They should be made after Q and A, in other words, during debate. They must be recognized to make the motion, and the amendment must be deemed to be within scope of what we are talking about and what the people of the town have been warned about. So please keep in mind, while what we're doing is serious, and has both long and short-term impacts to all of us, we're all neighbors, please be respectful and enjoy the process. It truly is a great one. And one other thing to keep in mind, when we all gather here, this is a legislative process. So any voting members who are here, you are considered legislators. So please conduct yourself accordingly, and if anyone can, everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance. So if the people who are running for election can please stand and be recognized. Board Selectmen, we have Tim Bonin, Leslie Stevens, Assessor, Josiah Birch, Constable, Carol Field, and Benjamin Tassino. School Committee, Beth Bergstrom, the Agent Moses Wallace Device. And if anyone ever wants to know what that is, it's a fun conversation. Is Jerome trustee for Public Library, is Dana Harvey trustee for Public Library, Lauren Church Cemetery Commission, Leo Lyons, and Alina Almeida Water Super Commission, Kyle La House, Water Super Commission, Philip Stinchfield, Recreation Commission, Hannah Stevens, and Jennifer Coslin, and Planning Board, Jacob Gannattic, and Michael Zwicker. And if I mispronounce any of those names, I apologize, but I do thank all of you for running and continuing to further the town and make it a wonderful place to live. So if there is no dissent to dispensing of the reading of the annual town meeting warrant, then we will not do that, because nobody wants to listen to me do that. Seeing none, I do have the properly attested warrant in front of me, signed by Tim Bonin, Michael Fitzpatrick, Harold Davis, Ross Smith, Leslie Stevens, and attested to by Carol Field on April 14, 2025. I'll now accept a motion to recess the annual town meeting to the conclusion of the special town meeting. Motion made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any dissent? Seeing none, we'll move on to the special town meeting. And again, is there any dissent to dispensing of the reading of the warrant for the special town meeting? Okay, seeing none, I do have a duly attested copy of the special town meeting warrant in front of me, signed by Timothy Bonin, Michael Fitzpatrick, Harold Davis, Ross Smith, and Leslie Stevens, and attested to by Carol Field dated April 14, 2025. Having read the special town meeting articles, I do believe that we can all consider these to be housekeeping articles. And if there is no dissent, I would like to take articles one through four together, and then I will ask if there's any dissent to passing them unanimously. By taking them all together, that will raise the quantum of vote to nine tenths for all four articles. Is there any dissent to taking articles one through four simultaneously? Okay, seeing none. Is there a second to moving articles one through four as printed in warrant?
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, is there any dissent to passing articles one through four unanimously? Seeing none, articles one through four pass unanimously. That was, there we go. Okay, I will now accept a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Is there any dissent to pass it, or to closing the special town meeting? Seeing none, we will move on. Okay, and I will now accept, now I will read, and we're going to call this the "Make Gene Happy" motion, and very, very regretfully, is going to introduce readers into the town meeting that I've been electing to do until this point. But here we go. So I will accept a motion to hear and act upon the report and recommendations of the Finance Committee, and further to fix the salary and compensation of elected officials as presented in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2026 budget recommendation, and further to approve a total budget of $34,837,444, consisting of $15,629 transferred from reserve for reduction of excluded debt account, $385,000 transferred from the ambulatory, I'm sorry, ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, and the remaining $34,436,815 to be raised and appropriated, all as set forth in the column entitled Fiscal Year 26. The Finance Committee Board Selectmen and Town Administrator recommended budget for the purpose of funding the annual operating budget of the town for fiscal year 2026, and this will be articles one through three. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. So now what we do is, we'll go through and I will read each heading. If there is a hold, where somebody would like to discuss something in the budget, under one of those headings, please yell "hold," and we will go back to that part of the budget. So we'll start with Total General Government, Total Public Safety, Total Public Works, Total Health and Human Services, Total Culture and Recreation, Total Education. Did someone yell "hold" on that?
I got this hold on the Culture and Recreation, and not on the...
Not on, no? Total Insurance and Employee Benefits, Total Debt Service, the Total Capital Outlay, Total Special Articles, and Total Transfers. Okay, so with that, we have a question on the budget under Total Culture and Recreation. Can we get the mic in the back, please?
Thank you. Christina Minard, 15 Manchuck Street. I had a, I was curious on the library, what the increase of expenses were, because from budget 2024 to 2026, it's up 40%. So I was just curious what that was.
Tim, can you take that question, or would you like to defer to somebody else?
I would defer to someone else.
Okay.
Someone with staff.
Gene?
So Mr. Moderator, thanks to the questioner's review. I heard the question to be the expense budget.
Can you...
The expense budget for the library, not the whole library function?
Yeah, specifically the expense from budget 2024 to the budget 2026, or from the 350,000 to 135,000. So I was just curious.
All right, so ma'am, you need the microphone.
Sorry, so specifically it was on wages, not on salaries. So it just seemed like, I'm sorry, it seemed to be expenses, not wages I was interested in.
So the wage increase from $83,000 to 135,000, is that correct? Is that your question?
139.
139, sorry.
So this year, the library director has requested a repair and maintenance budget to begin to catch up with small maintenance items in his building. So from over those two years that you mentioned, that the questioner mentioned, Mr. Moderator, that's going up from $2,500 to $15,000. You won't see this level of detail in your warrant document, but I've given you the answer. There's licenses and subscriptions, which relate to electronic books, electronic materials. That was zero two years ago. It's $14,400 now, and that greatly expands the available material of library. And then circulation, so this is your old passion, bound volumes and related materials are up from about $60,000 two years ago to just shy of $80,000 this year. So it's an expansion of the collection of library in your opportunities to design.
Has your question been answered? Okay, other questions? Okay, seeing none, is there any dissent to passing articles one through three unanimously? Okay, seeing none, articles one through three pass unanimously. I'll accept a motion to pass Article IV as printed in the warrant. Okay, motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are any questions on Article IV? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article IV? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article IV unanimously? Seeing none, Article IV passes unanimously. So there has been a special request to take up Article 20 out of order, and there will be a motion to pass over Article 20. That requires a two-thirds vote to take the, to take the article out of order. Is there any, sorry, is there a motion to take up Article 20 at this time?
For who?
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of taking up the article, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
Okay, the ayes clearly have it by a two-thirds, and at this point, I will accept a motion to pass over Article 20.
For who?
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Sorry?
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any dissent to passing over Article 20 unanimously? Okay, seeing none, Article 20 is passed over by a unanimous vote. Okay, and at this point, this is what we consider more of our housekeeping issues. Is there any dissent to moving Articles 5 through 8 together? Okay, seeing none, we'll take up Articles 5 through 8 simultaneously. Can I get a motion to, or yes, can I get a second on moving Articles 5 through 8?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any dissent to passing Articles 5 through 8 unanimously? Seeing none, Articles 5 through 8 pass unanimously. Okay, I will accept the motion to move Article 9 as printed in the warrant. Motion's been made, is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions on Article 9? Would anyone like to speak on Article 9? Okay, seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 9 unanimously? Seeing none, Article 9 passes unanimously. Gene really likes to see if I can actually read. So we will be reading this article. We'll accept the motion to transfer the sum of $459,678.66 from free cash, $450,000 from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation, and $58,321.34 from a previously approved capital project, Article 10, on the May 6, 2024 highway loadout with plow, for a total of $968,000 to fund the following capital projects and all associated costs. Roadway paving and repairs and associated cost, $360,000. Ambulance and equipment purchase and associated cost, $450,000. Ductless replacement for historical records area and all associated cost, $23,000. School front mounted field mower replacement and all associated cost, $35,000. Transfer to capital stabilization fund of $100,000 for a previously determined total of $968,000. And just to point out, this is slightly different than what is in the, in the bulletin. But that is the motion that will be before us. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions on Article 10? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article 10? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 10 unanimously? Seeing none, Article 10 passes unanimously. Okay, Article 11, I will accept a motion to move Article 11 as printed in the warrant.
For who?
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions on Article 11?
Kathy Landers, 39 Manchuck Street. What does the article do?
What the article does is, that mic's not very hot, so you're going to kind of have to hit it, but this works better. What this article does is, it provides an increase in the exemption that we provide for our seniors, retreads, and folks that are disabled. Working with the assessor's office, we looked at, the last time this was updated was back around Reagan, during that time. So we talked to quite a few seniors that are homeowners, and this is, you know, geared towards homeowners. It would offer them a 50% increase on some $1,000 tax write-off. It would go to $500 over the course of, it'd take about four years, four or five years to get there, because there's a certain percentage year-over-year, so it doesn't happen instantaneously. And then that would be the cap there, therefore, so.
Is your question answered?
Yeah.
Do you have a follow-up?
No.
Okay, other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 11 unanimously? Seeing none, Article 11 passes unanimously. Article 12, I will accept a motion to move Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
For who?
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. I know there's been some chatter on Article 12, so I am going to invite Les over here to give a proponent speech on this one, and then we'll move into question and answer
So we worked on this bylaw due to an EPA order that was provided to the town. This was the third attempt of the town taking up to implement a stormwater bylaw. Stormwater is related to our town drainage, and it allows us the right to drain into the Monford River. So what has really changed from the second version to the third version where we are today, we went from a town-wide blanket coverage map to only the EPA areas that were required, so the bare minimum of the minimum. It also changed the scope of it, which was the disturbance area of 5,000, any square feet of disturbance, which we would have to file an application, to one acre, which is 43,000 square feet. Also, the other change that we went through was making sure that the areas were clearly defined and that we were meeting the minimum requirement. If this bylaw passes, then, you know, before the planning board has to write up the regs and do applications. The bylaw is really geared towards large-scale developments, which would have to do with site plan, or commercial, you know, or industrial parks and stuff like that. There may be some residential areas, but again, it's a disturbance over an acre. So if someone's going to behave one acre of land, that's a disturbance, so you'd have to file an application for a review process, which is pretty standard, things you would have to do for site plans and stuff like that.
Are there any questions?
Michael Hutneck, Hollis, Stone Lake. At any point in time, can this map be changed? Or secondary question, how was it determined? You said it was the EPA minimum requirements. What were those requirements that put some landowners in that zone and some that weren't?
So the map cannot be changed unless it comes back before the town meeting here. The map of the red areas were from where we have storm drains and where the drains could end up draining into a stream that ends up into the Monford River or the waters of the U.S. The way we wrote the bylaw was to make sure that the people here, that if the map ever changes in any way, it comes back before the people to decide, do they want to keep this map or the old map? So we don't see at this point where we've got the minimum requirement. We dated the map as February 25, made sure that was in the two bylaw. So should it have to go, be updated at any point in time, it'd have to come back before the people here. So that was one of the things that we wanted to make sure that happened. So there's nothing can happen in two meetings, you know, in a planning board or any other forum, it would have to come back before the town meeting here.
Was your question answered?
Yes, sit down.
Do you have a follow-up?
I do.
Go ahead.
Is there any protection against inaccuracies? And I believe that there's an inaccuracy in that instance, and I am one of the landowners on that list there. The nearest street drain to my house is across from Railroad Ave. I live up the, up the street from that. I'm confused as to how some lots were chosen and some were not, in that respect.
So yes, so one, I have the reds down to you, and a few of my parcels are red in this map area as well. Regarding inaccuracies in the map and stuff like that, the planning board, as well as the community director, community development director, would have the ability to weigh in on that and say, okay, clearly, you know, yes, you're on the list, but you're not, it shouldn't be on the list. So both the community development director, as well as the planning board, would have the ability to take that up and weigh if an application's not required in particular cases, again. So we made sure that protection was also covered in the bylaw. It's underneath the exemptions, and we're going to make sure that continues in the regulations to be able to provide, if inaccuracies related to a map, to be able to provide that for other residents.
be able to take a large, but we do own over an acre, would we be required to do this?
So the bylaw is written that it has to be a disturbance over an acre of land, so, and the disturbance could be if you're, you know, clear cutting and removing stumps and everything else, and clearly that'd be a large-scale disturbance and stuff like that.
Other questions? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article?
Lisa Mozinski, Sixty Oak Street. Some of you in this room might recall that at the end of 2023, into the beginning of 2024, we had two massive stormwater incidences in town. One was the cubes at Gilboa, and the other one was on Oak Street at a solar developing project. There was a massive erosion incident that turned the color of Mantra upon chocolate brown. The remediation is ongoing to this day. This map and this bylaw has no protection in it for the people who are affected by those incidences. It changes nothing. The protection is targeted, specific, and in my opinion, discriminates against people who are living in a specific part of town that has very small lots for the most part. The balance of town where there are bigger, wider spaces that have potential for greater erosion are not impacted by this at all. And so I asked the people in this room to defeat this article, send it back to this committee or a new committee to make sure the entire town is covered. We have more than one watershed, the Monford isn't the only one, and this impacts the entire community. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on the article? Okay, and this article does require a simple majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Not gonna call that one. If, all those in favor, please stand and hold your motor card up, and we will do this the old-fashioned way. You may be seen. All those opposed, please stand and make out. You may be seen. The ayes have it, and a vote of forty-one to twenty-three. Moving on to Article Thirteen, I will accept a motion to move Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant. Motion's been made, is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions on Article Thirteen? Okay, would anyone like to speak on Article Thirteen? Seeing none, is ready to send to passing Article Thirteen unanimously. Seeing none, Article Thirteen passes unanimously. I will accept a motion to move Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any questions on Article Fourteen? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, also seeing none, is ready to send to passing Article Fourteen unanimously. Seeing none, Article Fourteen passes unanimously. I will accept a motion to move Article Fifteen as printed in the warrant. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I will accept a report from the planning board. And the report states, at the meeting of Wednesday, April twenty-third, the Douglas Planning Board voted unanimously to request the Board of Selectmen to consider the following zoning map amendment for Brown Road and Parcels Hundred and Twelve dash four, Hundred and Twelve dash three, and Hundred and Twelve dash two, from industrial zone to rural and cultural zone. Excuse me. Are there any questions on Article Fifteen? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article Fifteen? Also seeing none, is ready to send to passing Article Fifteen unanimously. Seeing none, Article Fifteen passes unanimously. Article Sixteen, accept a motion to move Article Sixteen as printed in the warrant. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions on Article Sixteen? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article Sixteen? Seeing none, is ready to send to passing Article Sixteen unanimously. I will accept a motion to move Article Fifteen as printed in the warrant. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I will accept a report from the planning board. And the report states, at the meeting of Wednesday, April twenty-third, the Douglas Planning Board voted unanimously to request the Board of Selectmen to consider the following zoning map amendment for Brown Road and Parcels Hundred and Twelve dash four, Hundred and Twelve dash three, and Hundred and Twelve dash two, from industrial zone to rural and cultural zone. Are there any questions on Article Fifteen? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article Fifteen? Also seeing none, is ready to send to passing Article Fifteen unanimously. Seeing none, Article Fifteen passes unanimously. Article Sixteen, accept a motion to move Article Sixteen as printed in the warrant. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions on Article Sixteen? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article Sixteen? Seeing none, is ready to send to passing Article Sixteen unanimously. Okay, seeing none, Article Sixteen passes unanimously. Article Seventeen, accept a motion to move Article Seventeen as printed in the warrant. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions on Article Seventeen? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none, is ready to send to passing Article Seventeen unanimously. Seeing none, Article Seventeen passes unanimously. On the home stretch. Article Eighteen, I will accept a motion to move Article Eighteen as printed in the warrant.
To move.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Are there any questions on Article Eighteen? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article Eighteen? Also seeing none, is ready to send to passing Article Eighteen unanimously. Seeing none, Article Eighteen passes unanimously. And Article Nineteen, accept a motion to move Article Nineteen as printed in the warrant. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions on Article Nineteen? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article Nineteen? Also seeing none, is ready to send to passing Article Nineteen unanimously. Seeing none, Article Nineteen passes unanimously. Article Twenty has been passed over. These are the current openings that the town has available. If you look at this list and you see a place that your skills might be able to give back to the town, please consider doing so, and you can reach out to the Board of Selectmen, and they will give you all the information that they can in order to get you involved. So with that, thank you to the school for hosting us, our policemen for being here for us, and everyone who I said before had made town meeting possible, make it available for attending, and with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made, is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those who don't want their wife to go home and build a she shed, she shed, please say no. Seeing none, meeting is adjourned.